Hi, everybody. I just want to remind you that you can star six to mute yourself, especially during the meeting because a lot of background noise, nobody can hear. So to unmute yourself, do star six.
Is everybody here?
I think Stephanie is not checked in.
I don't see Stephanie.
I don't believe she's on yet.
This is Gail Christopher.
Okay, Stephanie is joined.
There she is. Okay, everybody's here? Can you hear me? Just give me a eye sign if you can hear me. Okay, great. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting for the Carmel Planning Commission. Call the meeting to order.
Yes, Commissioner Bolton.
Tonight is extraordinary business. It's time to elect or appoint the Chair and the Vice Chair. So at this time, if anybody would like to make a nomination, they can do that.
I'd like to nominate Michael.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to nominate Michael LaPage for chair.
I second that, Gail.
Oh, she heard it.
Gail's unmuted. Why can't I hear? Oh, I know why.
Can you hear me a little bit better now?
Now I can hear you. It was my fault. I had my mute on my computer. Technical difficulty.
You don't know that you've now been nominated and seconded.
Really? Is the meeting over? Is the meeting over yet? All right. So did we have any nominations?
Yeah, you were nominated.
Stephanie seconded the nomination.
Okay, all right, let's just vote on that and then we'll do the Vice Chair. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner LaPage?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I will continue as the Chair for another year. And thank you for having faith in me to do that. So now we'll take nominations for the Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Gail.
Okay, I will second that. If there's no more discussion, can we have roll call? Margaret?
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes. Thank you. We'll continue for a year as the Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, do any of the Commissioners or anyone from the public have any announcements?
Nope. We should do public appearances.
Oh, we didn't. I'm sorry. I just jumped right over that. Okay, at this time, we'll do the, on the agenda would be the public appearances. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda tonight. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes or otherwise, as established by the Commission. Matters not appearing on the consent agenda will not receive action at this meeting. May refer to staff for a future meeting. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the Planning Commission regarding matters which are not on our agenda tonight? I don't see anybody, don't hear anybody, so we will move on. Now we have the announcements. Are there any announcements? No announcements? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the Commission or the public may ask that any item be considered individually for purposes of discussion and/or public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all those items. Okay, we have four items on the consent agenda tonight. The first item is the November 10th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. The second item is Design Study 20-125. This is consideration of final design study for the Russey Hazavik project and associated coastal development permit for construction of a new two-story residence on a vacant lot located in a single-family residential zone located on the southwest corner of Fifth and Lincoln. The third item on the consent agenda is Use Permit 20-278. This is consideration of a use permit for the Nut Tree for the establishment of a new specialty food store located on the west side of Mission between Ocean and Seventh and the Central Commercial District. This is in the Plaza. And the fourth item on the consent agenda is Use Permit 20314. This is consideration of a use permit for Demetrius Cafe to extend the hours of operation to 11:00 P.M. It's a full-line restaurant. It's located in the Central Commercial District at the southeast corner of Ocean and Lincoln. So would any members of the Commission like any of those items pulled?
Michael, I'd like a point of information on the Hazavik project. I noticed that we don't typically put final on the consent agenda, I don't believe. But I don't want to know it. However, there are a couple of items that staff had brought up, and I'd like to make sure those remain as special conditions.
Okay, are they, have you looked at the resolution? Are they on the resolution? So they are on the resolution?
I'm pretty sure they are.
I have to, I don't have, I gotta pull that up. Hang on a minute here. I don't know if I have that one.
This is Evan. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Evan, can you just go over the special conditions real quick on this, on the resolution?
Yep, I'm working on getting there myself.
Okay. I'm sort of...
So Chair LaPage, we probably should pull this item for discussion.
Okay, we'll pull this item. So we're going to pull item number two. We'll pull item number two. Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like any items pulled on the consent agenda? Okay, so I'm going to assume that items number one, the minutes, items number three and four are available for a consent motion. Can we have a motion for those items?
Yeah, I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes. All right, so at this time, we will consider, get the information regarding item number two, the Design Study 20125, which is the Russey Hazavik. So Commissioner Lehman, you were concerned about the special conditions. Evan, have you got those open now in front of you?
Yes, I do. So there are four special conditions applied to the project by the Planning Department. That doesn't include the standard conditions addressed by the Environmental Compliance Department and the Forestry Department. The planning special conditions are Special Condition Number 34, which clarifies the tree planting requirement. Number 35, which relates to the retaining walls located in the street-side setbacks. Those need to be modified to three feet, which is consistent with the zoning code. Number 36 relates to light fixtures. The proposed light fixture exceeded the allowable lumens. That's under standard condition of approval, number 12. So the fixture will need to be addressed. And then 37 also addresses lighting, specifically location, and that states that no more than one wall stands shall be located at any single building entry.
Thank you, Evan. Commissioner Lehman, were those the conditions that you were concerned about?
They were, and it was just one more question since I have Evan available right now. The windows were noted as, they're not in the special conditions, but they were noted as simulated divided lights. And I want to make sure that they're not snap-out panes in these divisions that... I haven't seen a sample of them.
I believe, let me double check, that might be in a different standard condition. So it looks like that did not make it into the conditions. Typically, we have that standard condition that says when it's true divided lights. Because they're simulated divided lights, that condition was struck. But we can certainly include what would be condition of approval, number 38, saying that snapping would be prohibited.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lehman, would you like to make a motion to accept the resolution with the additional special condition?
Yes, absolutely. I move for approval of, I'm going back to the DS number on this. DS 20-125 Russey Hazavik. It's APN 010212022. And the southwest corner of Fifth and Lincoln, and I move through approval with the special condition, with all the conditions, including the special conditions and the additional special condition that we just added at the meeting. So that's it.
Just stated that the simulated divided lights shall be fixed.
Right.
Okay, do we have a second for the motion?
I can second that.
All right, this motion has been seconded by Commissioner Bolton. If there's no more discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Orders of Business, and this is adoption of the 2021 Planning Commission meeting calendar. Is there any discussion on this?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt it as presented by staff? I'll make a motion. We adopt the calendars presented by staff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, no more discussion. Roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, the calendar will be adopted as presented by staff. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight are the public hearings. And the first item on the public hearing is Design Study 20191. It's located on Carmelo, two northwest of 12th. This is consideration of a final design study and variance. The variance is 20-306. It's the Brooks Residence. And it has associated coastal development permit for the demolition of an existing single-family residence and the construction of new residents located on Carmelo Street, two northwest of 12th. It's in a single-family R1 zone. And, yeah, can we have the staff report?
Thank you, Chair LaPage. Good afternoon. Can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation?
I can.
Yes.
Okay, great. So before you this afternoon is the final design study and variance for the Brooks project. The Commission originally heard this project back in October at the concept review and did accept the conceptual design. So the existing site contains a single-family dwelling. It's a little over 1,100 square feet and is a single-story residence with an attached garage. This is an irregular lot at 3,994 square feet. It has a jogged lot line on the south side. There are six trees on the property, five of which have been rated significant. And the proposed project is for demolition of the existing house and construction of a new two-story, single-family dwelling, just under 1,800 square feet. It would still have an attached garage, and no tree removals are proposed as part of this project. So again, the concept design was reviewed in October, and it was accepted with conditions. Some of those conditions include protection of significant trees, removal of a stone walkway and the right-of-way, an encroachment permit application for driveway retaining walls, and then also some conditions regarding the second-story deck at the west elevation. The project also includes a variance for the composite side setback. And then we'll talk a little bit about colors, materials, and finishes, as well as lighting associated with the project. So beginning with the significant trees. I don't know if you can see my cursor. I'm not sure if I'm sophisticated enough for this, but let me give it a try. So I neglected to highlight this tree, but all the significant trees are shown in sort of this purple color. There's another very large tree here at the rear of the lot. All of these trees will be protected during construction. Staff has included a new condition of approval that the applicant identify the six-foot root protection zone, as well as a 15-foot hand-dig zone around all significant trees. And these zones will be shown on the construction drawings. And this will help to facilitate protection of the root structures of these trees during construction. And then...
Marnie, can I interrupt you for one minute?
Yes.
On my screen, you're not in present mode, so I can't see anything you're doing other than the title page for your PowerPoint.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know.
Just shows Brooks Design Study. There you go.
I thought it was something wrong with my computer.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's usually me. Okay.
Now we can see it.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so this was the existing slide with the details, proposed project with the details. This is what we're going to cover this evening. So you guys can see all this now? Really good?
Looks perfect.
Okay. All right, so here are significant trees in purple. And then I was just mentioning, the root protection zones will be shown on the construction drawings. One of the conditions of the concept design study was that the stone walkway here on the right-of-way be removed. The applicant's now proposing a decomposed granite walkway, which does meet our standards. There was also a special condition that the driveway retaining walls be subject to approval of an encroachment permit. The applicant did submit that application. It was reviewed by Public Works, as well as Planning. And the applicant was encouraged to kind of go back and take a look at the grades and see if there was a way to accommodate the walls without encroaching into the public realm. So with some creative sort of grading techniques, we believe that the driveway can be accommodated without the encroachment. Okay, so the next topic for discussion are potential privacy impacts. So the neighbors to the west did attend the concept meeting and expressed some concerns about views from the rear west-facing deck into their patio. The graphic you see on the left is the west elevation, where you can see the second-floor deck that is proposed. The middle graphic shows the side view of the deck, as well as the fence proposed along the rear property line. And then the graphic on the right is a plan view showing the size of the deck, which does extend the length of the house, but is a very modest sort of eight feet deep. So the applicant did meet with the west neighbor and took a look at the project from their vantage point. An updated sightline diagram has been prepared, as well as a revised fence detail in order to make sure that the privacy impact is mitigated. So this is a photograph from the west neighbor's patio looking east up at the project. The orange netting that you see in the photo is representative of the privacy fence that would be installed. If you can see, there's a little blue dot here, which represents a person standing on the deck and that the privacy fence would adequately shield that line of sight into the neighbor's rear yard. And then a detail of the privacy fence that is being proposed. This would be a six-foot solid combination of a wall, as well as a fence, with an additional five feet of a living privacy fence on top. This would be a sort of a wire trellis feature that vines would be trained to grow on. And the applicant did provide an updated sightline diagram showing the line of sight being adequately mitigated through this privacy fence. Also, at the concept hearing, we discussed privacy with respect to the neighbor to the south. This is where the jog lot line occurs. And the south neighbor's master bedroom and bathroom are along this side of their home. The applicant has shifted the house one foot to the north. So there's a seven-foot setback now on the south side of the residence. And the privacy fence being proposed, there are two options that the applicant is putting forth. One would be just a solid fence that's nine feet, four inches tall. And this is at the request of the south neighbor. The other option would be for a six-foot solid fence with an additional three-foot, four-inch living privacy fence on top. So very consistent design with what's being proposed on the rear property line. And again, the total height being nine feet, four inches. So also included with this project is a variance application. We discussed the variance in detail at the concept hearing. This is a very unique sort of situation where the lot line along the south side of the property is jogged. And this creates a challenge when calculating the required composite setback. Just to kind of recap the history, these two parcels were believed to be under a single ownership when the house to the south was originally built. And it was built across the property line. So when the owners, the prior owners decided that they wanted to sell off this particular lot, they had to adjust the lot line so that it didn't go through their house anymore. So created a little bit of a challenge for the composite setback. But the variance will, would allow for a reduction of essentially one foot in the composite setback. So the typical composite setback for a traditional 4,000-square-foot lot is 10 feet. On this irregular configuration, a strict application of the code would mean that it would be 11 feet, which would be incredibly difficult at the most narrow portion of the lot. So the variance request is for a reduction of one foot in the composite setback. And again, just a small difference from what you saw at the concept hearing. The north side setback is now three feet, as opposed to four, and the south side setback is seven feet. And then moving on to the final details review. This shows all the finishes, colors, materials. They are the same as what was presented at the concept hearing. So the home would be finished with a vertical board and batten, natural wood siding, metal roof. And the site walls would be of a complementary stone color. The light fixtures proposed do meet our requirements, with the exception of the pendant light, which was proposed to be hung from the trees, not something that we allow. So there's a condition of approval that requires the elimination of that particular fixture. But all other fixtures do meet our lighting requirements. And with that, staff's recommendation is that the Commission approve the design study with conditions. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff, Commissioners? I don't see anybody raising their hand. So would the applicant or the applicants represented like to address the Planning Commission regarding this application? Eric?
There we go. Hello, Chairman LaPage and Planning Commissioners. Eric Dyer, architect for this project. I guess I should address just what we were left with at the last meeting, which was really to go back and work with some of the neighbors to make sure we could mitigate any concerns. We started with the McKeens who own the property to the west. You remember at the previous meeting, at that meeting, we actually had proposed the same idea we're using now, which is a six-foot-high solid fence and wall and a trellis that would have a vine, a dense vine called a ficus pumilla that would be pre-established and then grow on that and establish a really dense layer that would not allow sight between the two properties. Based on our survey information that we picked up, we assumed that was correct. But in order to confirm that and to prove it and make everyone feel comfortable, we went to the site and we put up an 11-foot-tall netting across the rear yard property line. And then with the permission of the McKeens, we went to their property and then took photographs, also establishing in those photographs, you know, a head of a person that is about six feet tall... you know, ahead of a person that is about six feet tall that would be standing at the very front of our proposed deck. So we would understand where the sightline was coming from. And then we took those photographs and I annotated those photographs that you saw. And I presented those to the McKeens and also had a nice Zoom meeting with Christopher McKeon, who was the representative of the family. And I think we resolved their concerns. And I certainly I think is makes Toby Brooks and Kelly Melgram happy. You know, neither party wants to see the other, and I think we accommodated it with this idea. The next neighbor we wanted to discuss things with was the neighbor to the south, the Ramesses. And I did have conversations with them over the phone. He they requested, and as he was on, I believe, the call from the last meeting or sent a letter in requesting a nine foot four solid privacy fence along the south property line, basically where his house is in the middle of the lot. We have no problem providing that. I know at the meeting, there was some commissioners that expressed some concerns that they may not want that tall a solid fence. And so you saw us provide two examples or two options for the planning commission. We're happy with either. And I obviously Mr. Ramos, I think prefers the solid, but I think in the end there will be a solid privacy and screening between the two properties with either proposal. Mr. Ramos also requested that we move the property to the north about a foot. So you provide a little more separation between the structures. And I think it does help also with what was, I think, described as a possible tunnel effect that some of the commissioners were concerned about. And it also provides, so we agreed to that. We did change all our drawings to show that. And what it also does, and which is a really another positive result, is it pushes us farther away from some of the important trees, which I think helps out for that situation a lot. So I think with that, Mr. Ramos was happy with us. I don't know if he's attending the meeting or not, but or sent anything in, but I think that addressed his concerns. Regarding the encroachment permit, we did think, you know, having some low stone curbs in the right of way would be preferable, but as we looked at the situation and, you know, you know, saw that the difficulties of trying to do that were were so extensive, we decided to figure a way to make it work. And it really wasn't that much of a problem to pull our stone curbs back to the property line and basically have some light grading in the right of way to provide any little slope we wanted for the driveway. So that worked out really well. I thought that was a good solution. The only other thing regarding the resolution or some of the issues in the staff report, I want to thank Marty for all the diligent work and detailed work and getting that out and addressing all the complexities of the project. Regarding that there's the privacy issue on the north side of the deck, which was brought up in the staff report. And again, I, as I expressed in the last meeting, don't feel we need to have any privacy screen on the north side of our deck. The deck is significantly forward of the adjacent house. I think when you're out on that deck, you'll basically want to look out at the forward trees and the view. It would really take a lot of work to go to the edge of the deck and look all the way back to look into their properties. And there's been no complaints from the neighboring property either. So I and additionally, I think that would hurt the design of the project. So I would encourage the commission to allow us to keep the design as is regarding that side of the deck. We have the landscape architect here. And he would be able to answer any questions if you have any regarding any of the other parts of the property. And with that, I think that's I addressed the main changes that we we did for the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Eric regarding this project?
I don't have any.
Thanks. Thank you, Eric.
Okay, thank you. And if I I might reserve the right to answer some questions if anything comes up during other testimony, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Are there any members from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application?
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Maria Gregoria. I'm one of the McKeens. And maybe this be towards Eric. And thank you very much for all this work on mitigating this, you know, for the west side. But one concern I have is about the in the future if the trellis green law will be maintained. And is there a way that we can be assured of that or? But is there any suggestion?
I'll I'll we'll take your question and we'll have staff answer that.
Okay.
As we move through the public comments. Did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
No, that was the only one.
All right, thank you. I believe, Mr. Brooks, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something? You want to you need to, if you're on the phone, you need to push star six or unmute.
I think he was on the the Google Meet.
He was. Yes, what I thought, but I can't hear him.
Well, I might, can I address just?
Yes, star six will unmute him.
Is he on his phone or Google Meet?
So maybe if you try hovering, take your mouse down to the bottom of the screen and hover and a white bar should pop up. Did we lose him?
Yeah, I think he's gone. Okay, maybe he'll come back here in a minute.
You can also hang up and call back in. And he should be able to come right up.
Yeah. Okay, we'll give him a couple minutes here. Would staff like to answer? Would staff like? Oh, there he is. Okay.
I apologize. I inadvertently hung up.
Happens all the time.
Can I just say a few words? I'd like to thank.
Yes, yes, you have the.
I would like to thank Chair Lepage and the commission for your time and and energy you put into this. I think Eric did a nice job of explaining how we've made an honest effort to to conform to the commission's requests and the and the neighbors' requests. We have every intention of being good neighbors, good citizens. We enjoyed the tenures we've had in Carmel. We're excited about our our project and and we expect to maintain an open dialogue with our neighbors to make sure that any concerns get addressed, and I'm sure that you will as well. So thanks again. We're excited about our plans and look forward to moving moving this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Hello. Hello, this is Christopher McKeon. Can I have a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you for, I'm Christopher McKeon. I'm on the neighbors on the west of the Brooks project. And thank you to the planning commission for letting me speak. I understand the Brooks desire to replace their family. But I do have concerns that it still an overbearing overbears onto our property. I spoke with Eric Dyer several times. He's clearly a talented architect. He's familiar with all the Carmel planning. If I saw his plans on paper, I would probably vote for it right away, too. But I feel like there's nothing like seeing something in person to gain perspective on the actual scale. And so I don't think you should grant final approval until you visit our property to take it all in so that you're voting with the full overview. I know that it's COVID time, but I invited the planning commission in my October letter. And I can make our courtyard available by appointment or by groups or by schedule. And I feel it can be done in a safe way. And that will allow you to see all the different variables at once, the and in scale and with perspective, the proposed fence with the trellis on top, the trees, especially the 72 foot cypress tree that that we share a fence with, the slope of the lot, how the project is situated and how it affects the neighbors around us. Nobody, nobody from the city planning staff or the commission has viewed the project from our western perspective. And I told Eric that I wanted the planning commission to physically visit, and he understood that. You know, I Eric had pointed out in the October 14th meeting that the project is narrow in the front along Carmelo to minimize the impact and that it's larger in the back, which is also combined with a slope. And so you really can't visualize any, you know, everything involved from our perspective till you till you visit our place. And so I want to reiterate that invitation to come and see it because, you know, while you say a six foot wall with a five foot trellis on top, it essentially looks like an 11 foot wall, you know? And then also, I had a question about right now, their house doesn't really have views. And part of this project is to build up and have a large deck so they have a sweeping view over our house, which I understand, but I'm also curious what happens in the future if when we go to make changes on our house, if they will use that view that they're creating right now with the project to prevent us from also changing our house.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
This is Chair Lepage. Is there a specific thing that you want us to see? I mean, other than just the general, you sort of have a, you're expressing you want the planning commission to come out there and look at the general layout. What I mean, it seems like there's been communication between you and Eric Dyer regarding the impacts of the deck on your property. It sounded like you had reached an agreement or an acceptance of what is being proposed. But now it sounds like you're not. So can you clarify that, please?
Okay, I will. I will clarify. Okay. So the proposed wall with the trellis on top is to block is to block something that's not there right now. And it essentially looks like an 11 foot fence. Is that, you know, I and and then we're on a double lot. So half of our lot will have a six foot fence, and then it will go up to 11 feet. And also Commissioner Lepage, in the October 14th meeting, you talked about the trees. We, we, there's a 72 foot cypress tree that's on that goes between their property and our, it's on their property, but it hangs over our place. And I have some concerns about some of the demolition and construction and the root system on that tree, which which overhangs our house. And also, in that October 14th meeting, Commissioner Lehman had said that she thought a nine and a half foot fence was really high between the south neighbors and the Brooks place, but you don't think an 11 foot fence is high between us and and the Brooks? And so basically what I'm saying is it's hard, it's easy to see on renderings and form opinions. And I'm not going to pretend to know the knowledge that you have as a commission. I just, we have a 100 year old place. This is a final design review. And I want to make sure that it all is in compliance or is congruent with the commission's foresight. And it's hard to see from from anywhere but our yard. And that's all I'm saying is that I would like the planning commission to have the full overview before making a final decision.
Okay, what I'm asking you specifically is, do you do you support the proposed six foot wood fence with a five foot trellis, which is composed of wires to support some type of vegetation to mitigate the privacy issues to your property?
If if you approve the house the way it is, I think that's the only thing that will develop some kind of buffer between us. But do you think that building a building because of the slope and the height of the plate at the rear on the western side of the project, it it requires an 11 foot buffer? Don't you think that is a pretty large buffer relative to new project? I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
So you're not, you don't, you're not expressing a opinion that you support it or do not support it? I'm asking you a yes or no question.
Okay. I'm saying that if the project is approved, it it needs the buffer because it's a large, it's an overbearing project. You know, there hasn't been any architectural change regarding us. It's all a way to buffer it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
No, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, my one, my one last question had to do with the view. If they create a large view over our house, does that impact us in the future if we try to make changes to our own house?
Views do not go with property, but the guidelines say that a a building shall not substantially obscure the view of surrounding neighbors. But views are do not go with go with the property.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you for answering my question.
Yes, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Eric, would you like to, yes, could you respond now to some of the concerns?
Sure. So I didn't hear all those concerns from from Mr. McKeon before, but I just wanted to one of the issues brought up is this idea of you not having seen it, which I think I requested Mr. McKeon to contact the city about having you visited the property if he was going to allow that. But we're not talking about just drawings or renderings. We do have, that's why we went out there and did physical netting and photographs. The photographs that were taken are directly from his property and is exactly what you would see. The only difference in what you'd see is the fact that we are not proposing a 11 foot high solid fence. We're proposing a standard six foot high plus a green trellis. So there'd be planted area above a standard six foot fence. And that's, I think that would be allowed in in most cases. The other thing I wanted to emphasize in terms of this idea of this looming building we're building is that we are actually providing just to the lower deck, we're providing a 25 foot setback from the rear property line to the actual second floor of the residence, we're providing almost a 33 foot setback. Those are significant setbacks, as I'm sure the commission is aware in terms of a lot of others projects that come before you. And I think that really does mitigate a lot of his concerns relative to, you know, how this would be perceived within, you know, another project in the area. Those are, I think we're being rather conservative and and handling it in terms of, you know, I think, I think we're doing a good job in terms of protecting privacy on both sides and providing what the Brooks, you know, would like to have as a a simple deck to look out at trees and a view.
Eric, what's the setback from that tree that Mr. McKeon was referring to? I don't have the plans.
He's referring, yeah, the the cypress tree he's talking about is is well in the southwest corner of the property and is at least almost 17 feet from our building.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay. I believe all the public comments have been made. Go ahead, Eric.
I was just gonna say one more thing regarding the previous comment about maintaining the the privacy screen and the vines is that, of course, those will be in, they are in the landscape plan, the plants, the ficus pumilla are in the plans, and they will be, as part of the building permit, provide drip irrigation to all those plants. And obviously, the other thing is that it's the incentive of both parties, including the Brooks, to keep that healthy and provide the privacy. So if they're willing to have another condition of approval without maintaining it, I suppose it would be open to that, but it's certainly the, you know, the Brooks intention is to maintain that in perpetuity.
Absolutely. It's in our best interest as well.
Eric, is that is that a, that particular plant species, is that a climbing? I assume because you have a a wire trellis, is that a climbing?
Yes, and I would, again, we do have the landscape architect to address it if you want to go into any detail about it. But it is a very dense, and we're, again, we're planning to pre-establish it so that it's in in full bloom when it, when we finish construction and the Brooks move in.
Okay.
This is Blake Joplin from Running, I'm landscape architect. I just wanted to add that, yes, the vine is a self climber. So it will climb on the fence without training. And when it reaches the trellis element, it will, it will attach itself on its own to that. So there wouldn't be, there wouldn't need to be any interim nurturing of the of the vine to grow on the on the fence, as it were. And and once it's established, it will provide a pretty substantial.
And I'm assuming this is a drought tolerant plant?
Yes, it is. It's a, it's It's a, it's a Mediterranean drought-tolerant, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions for, um, the applicant or the applicant's architect regarding this from the commissioners? Okay, I'm going to close the public comments and open it up to the commissioners for their comments. Uh, Commissioner Locke, would you like to begin?
If I can unmute myself, um, yeah, I'm happy to start. Um, no, I think that, uh, that, uh, that, well, first of all, the concern expressed by the neighbor about their future plans for remodeling and perhaps going upward and getting a better view. Um, I think you, you responded to that well, um, Commissioner LaPage. And, um, I think that the 11-foot-high trellis-topped, um, fence is appropriate. I think that when the ficus, no, I'm sorry, what? The plan is, when it finally grows up to the height and starts to go through the, um, the trellis area, um, that will actually be, I think, a really pretty buffer between the two properties. But I don't have any other real comments on it. I, I like the project and, um, yeah, and I, I appreciate that, uh, the architect worked with the neighbors to the extent that he did.
Uh, Commissioner Locke, what is your, uh, preference on the, the fence construction on the south side? That's an issue that was brought, there's two options, the solid nine-foot-four or the, I think it's a repetition of the, uh, actually, it's a little lower fence, it'd be, uh, a six-foot fence with, um, a three-foot-four addition on the top. Do you have a preference?
Um, I'm not really, um, inclined to like the concept of a solid fence. So I think I'd go with the second option.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any more comments?
No.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lehman, your comments, please?
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, thank you, Marnie, those slides were great, uh, review for us. Um, Eric, I think it's really a nice house, and I think you had a tricky project because of that jog in the lot line. And, um, I think you'd be congratulated. Um, I, um, I, I wanted to address a couple of things that Mr. McEwen said. Um, and, um, I, I do think that Commissioner, Chair LaPage, um, did, um, address most of what you said. But we, um, we always think in terms of shared views, um, in neighborhoods. So, um, if you decide to add a second story to your house at some time in the future, um, you have the same right to a portion of the view. And of course, you would want to do it without impacting your next-door neighbors because, um, we want to get along with everyone as much as we can. So, um, but it doesn't preclude your second story at some point if you have the square footage to do it. Um, the other thing is, we have a forester who's, who's very intent on saving trees. Um, and she, um, is very defined about exposed roots and hand-digging on projects. So I think you could, um, rest easy. Um, it, it's, it's never guaranteed that a tree will survive, but you know, if we keep having drought years like we're having right now, there's no guarantee that the tree will survive at all anyway. Um, and so I, I, but I do think it's not the construction that will harm the tree. It's so well-supervised. And, um, other than that, I, I think, um, it's a great project. I would like the fence kept at six feet, um, as, um, you just, um, mentioned, to Commissioner Locke, and, um, and consider using greenery above it, um, if you need further privacy. Um, but I, I don't want to create walls around projects either. So if it's green, if it's living, you know, that's fine for me. So, thank you. Michael, I think you're muted.
You're still muted, Michael.
Mm-hmm.
Marnie, is there a way that the tech people can unmute Michael?
He might need to log out and log back in. We, we cannot unmute other people.
Oh, oh. I'm going to send him a text.
Techy problems.
Yeah, Michael, try to, go ahead and log off and then log back in, rejoin the meeting.
Until Michael can get back in, um, Chris, would you like to, um, Commissioner Bolton, would you like to speak?
Can I hear me now?
Hi.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I lost the, uh, vid, and I've got an echo. Can I hear him? There we are. Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. Um, Commissioner Bolton, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Lehman. Mr. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. I, um, was not here for the last meeting, and so I missed the concept design for this project. Um, but given what's been said tonight and the review of the documents, I support the meet, this, uh, project in general. I think the green-topped fence is preferable to the solid wood fence. I'm concerned about walls and feeling of being penned in in these houses, given our small lot sizes. Um, I think the photos provided by staff in this, in the packet were sufficient to get an idea of the views and the impact on the neighbors. Although I do have general concerns about not visiting projects moving forward with other meetings, not knowing how long we're going to be stuck doing these remote meetings. And that's not appropriate, that's got to be a point. The point is here, though, I do, uh, support this project, and I don't really have any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Um, I believe I'm the only commissioner that hasn't spoken on this. One thing I did want to explain to Mr. McEwen is that, uh, because when I asked him whether or not he supported the, uh, the proposed privacy, the fence and the trellis on top in the back, he seemed to answer in saying that because the project is designed, it isn't located where it is, that it requires that. And I just wanted to, uh, explain to Mr. McEwen and also my comment is that this project is, is significantly far enough away from the, uh, the rear property line. So I think the, uh, it is located in a very good spot and, and it's got a very large setback, a 24-foot setback, which I think, uh, the, the architect stated, on the first floor, and a 33-foot setback on the second floor for this side. For a 100-foot lot, that's really significant. So I don't, um, I don't see any possibility of moving this, this, the, the house forward on the lot. And, um, I think the, what has been proposed by the architect is, is a good solution. Um, I, I don't like, I wouldn't want a solid fence in the back, and I don't want a, a nine-foot-four fence on the, uh, the south side. That just creates a wall, in effect, vegetation or some, uh, apparatus to hold vegetation is a much better solution. So, um, those are all my comments on it. Um, do we have a motion to accept the resolution as presented with any amended special conditions?
Oh, sure. Christopher, Stephanie, would you like to do it? I've already had my turn. Um, I'll, I'll propose a motion, um, for approval for DS 20-191 slash VA 20-306. Uh, the 010279 019. And the address is Carmelo, two north, northwest of 12th. Um, along with, um, the special conditions, um, I, um, would like to move for approval.
Okay, I'm not sure the resolution contained any special conditions. I'm having a little trouble opening up the resolution. That's kind of what got me in trouble on my, uh, video last time, but, um, maybe, maybe staff can confirm that. I, I think, I think what we are proposing is to, what you're proposing is to make a motion to accept the resolution as presented by staff.
Exactly, thank you.
I don't think, I don't think there were any additional special conditions.
Yes, there were, there were three. There's the tree protection zones.
Okay.
It's 28, 29, and 30.
Okay.
The, the pre-construction meeting, um, which is, um, something new I hadn't seen before, and, um, to schedule it with the project planner, um, uh, prior to the issuance of the building permit. And then a number 30, which is the tree pendant light fix, light fixture shall be removed from the plan.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any more discussion?
Chair LaPage, may I, may I ask for just a couple of clarifications?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that as part of the motion, it sounded like the commission was in favor of the, um, split solid and landscape fence along the south property line. And I didn't hear, um, a, any desire to change the railing on the deck to opaque on the north side. So I just wanted to make sure, um, that those two items are addressed.
Okay, Commissioner Lehman, would you like to amend your motion to include that?
Um, yes, certainly, that, we do, um, we do want, um, six-foot fences, um, with the greenery above. And, um, I'm sorry, Marnie, what was the other one?
Deck.
There was the obscured deck railing, I believe, on the north side.
Yes, to the deck railing, so we accept it as is.
Thank you.
Okay. And a second still stands?
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Okay, before we move on, I just wanted to make one correction. When I was referring to the consent agenda, I said that the, um, said item, item number three on the consent agenda, I said that was in the plaza, that's not in the plaza. That's on Mission between Ocean and 7th. I think that's correct. Okay, all right, the next item on the public hearings tonight is item number seven, it's a design study 20196. This is, uh, consideration of a concept design study and associated coastal development permit for construction of a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot located in the single-family residential R1 Zone District. This is located on Mission Street, five northwest of Santa Lucia, and it is the Turner Project. Do we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair LaPage. I am going to share my screen again. Um, hopefully I can get it right this time. Okay, can everyone see the title slide?
Yes.
No problem.
Can you see the second slide?
Yes.
Yes.
Beautiful, okay. So, uh, before the commission this evening is a concept, um, design study for the Turner Project. Um, this is a vacant lot located on Mission Street, five northwest of Santa Lucia. So the property, um, has 13, uh, trees that were identified during the preliminary site assessment, uh, 11 coast live oak and two Monterey pine. Five of the trees have been rated as significant, five moderately significant, and three were rated not significant. So this project, uh, went before the Forest and Beach Commission, um, earlier this year in February, uh, with a request to remove, uh, four moderately significant trees. Um, and those are the trees that you see with the X's on them. Um, that request was approved by the Forest and Beach Commission. Um, and in approving the tree removals, the commission also, um, placed a condition on the project that the house be set back a minimum of 20 feet from the pine that's located along the rear property line. So as I mentioned, um, in the last presentation, we're starting a new requirement that, um, applicants designate not only the six-foot root protection zones of significant trees, but also the 15-foot hand-dig zone. Um, and we really think that this graphical representation on the plans will really help during the construction phase so the contractors will see the extent of the areas that need to be dug by hand. Um, so you'll see that represented here on this site plan. Um, the red lines, uh, denote that 15-foot hand-dig zone. Uh, we're really stepping up our efforts to try to protect trees during construction. Um, and this is one of the ways that we are doing that. So this will be required, um, to be included on the construction drawings. and, yeah, so that is, that, that is the new requirement. Uh, one thing I, I should note is that the, the house does not appear to meet the minimum 20-foot setback that was requested by the Forest and Beach Commission. Uh, so there will need to be a slight adjustment, um, in the, in the, the location of the home before final review and approval. So the project includes two decks, uh, one on the front elevation, one on the rear. Uh, the rear elevation does face west. Uh, both decks are modest in size, um, 134 square feet at the front of the house, um, and then 83 square feet at the rear. Uh, staff did reach out to both the north property owner as well as the west property owner, um, to see if they had any concerns. The north property owner, uh, responded and, and felt that, um, any potential impacts had been mitigated through the design. Um, and they seemed, um, okay with the project as is. They didn't request any changes. Um, the deck on the front elevation is about six-and-a-half feet from the property line. Um, this does not appear to create any kind of privacy impact, um, at the front of their property. However, on the west elevation, the rear neighbors did express some- However, on the west elevation, the rear neighbors did express some concerns regarding the deck. And I know the, the architect Claudio is going to present some additional information on how he's responding to those concerns. Staff does note that the, the deck is set back a significant distance from the rear property line. It's also a very modest-sized deck, but it does have the potential to provide direct views into the, the neighbor's rear patio area. So this project also includes a driveway retaining wall that extends into the right-of-way, very similar to the last project that you just saw. Staff really is encouraging the architect to look at alternatives for, for this rather than extending into the public realm. So there is a special condition on this project, asking that the, this be reevaluated through grading or other alternatives to keep the wall out of the, the right-of-way. And then with respect to plate heights, the, the project is very well-sighted on the lot. Staff is very supportive of the design. The massing is quite appropriate for the lot. However, at the northwest corner, it appears that the plate height might exceed the 18-foot allowed by about one foot. This is a very, very minor deviation. However, you know, the code does say the maximum plate height should be 18 feet. So the designer will need to take a look at that before final details review and just make sure that it meets, it meets the standards. It is only this one, this one corner of the lot where it slightly exceeds the allowable. And then the only other design element that needs a slight refinement is with regards to the chimney cap. The code says that caps are limited to 24 inches in any horizontal dimension. So the cap currently proposed is just a little bit too large. Certainly, when we, we start talking about this level of detail, it's because there really isn't much else with the design that deviates from the guidelines. So it, it's a well-designed project, very appropriately sighted on the lot. Staff supports the, the concept and is asking the commission to accept it this evening. And with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff commissioners?
I have a brief question, Marnie.
Yes.
Regarding the 20-foot setback not being met, how far is it out of? The setback, how far is it encroaching into the 20 feet and is it possible to move it back?
So it, it's a little bit difficult for me to tell, but if you, if you look on this slide on the left-hand side, you can see the 15-foot no-dig zone. And so there needs to be an additional five feet between the red line and the edge of the house.
Sure, I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you, that's more clear, we'll ask the designer to clarify that, thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll invite the applicant or the architect to make their presentation to the planning commission.
Good afternoon, Chair LaPage and members of the planning commission. Claudio, I'm representing Liz and John Turner on this project. I'm going to share my screen while I do my presentation to walk you through the design. Just bear with me for a second on how to do this. Hearing, screen. Let's see. Let me know if you are able to see it. Can you see that, my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what you're looking at is-
Looks good, Claudio.
Thank you, thank you. So what you're looking at is the, the site plan. And you can, hopefully you can see the, my cursor here moving around a little bit so I can walk you through the concept. So as you can see, this property has a slope of 10 feet between the street and the back end. So it's a significant slope on this property. Also, there are some additional constraints, which are several trees on the front of the property. So accessibility to the property is very, very limited, one due to the slope and additionally to, due to the trees. So we have a very narrow area to gain or have access to the property. And that's how we came up with, you know, proposing the garage in this location. So after analyzing that, that concern that we had with the slope and the trees, our additional concerns were, you know, privacy obviously is usually a main concern that we have with these projects, they're very small lots. We also had concerns with casting a shadow and neighboring properties. As you can see, the property to the north does have a small patio on the rear half of their property. And so because of that, we, when we designed this project, we placed a second story, which is this cross-hatched area, as you can see. And we jogged a portion of it, this rear half of it, so we can maintain, you know, a more distance between this northern patio from the neighbor's property to our second story, just that way we can open up the views and the sky to this existing patio. Then we do have the property to the south. We don't have any concerns with that property. What we did is we made sure not to have any windows that looked into their direction. So there was very minor concerns that we have with this property. There is a patio on, on their southern side, on the front half of this property, which was of a, of a concern to us. But after meeting with the neighbor, I met with Chris Gaspish. And she mentioned to me that they were not concerned with the privacy and that they were willing to do some landscaping. And we, I mentioned that we wouldn't mind doing the landscaping for her and we can plant the hedge or some trees along the southern side of the property to provide the privacy that she needs. Their concern was that we have this patio here and a balcony. And I expressed to her that we have a balcony and a patio. And again, she was not concerned with the privacy as long as we put a hedge along this side of the property. They do have an existing garage in an angle that provides privacy to their patio as well. So with the combination of that structure and the hedge, I think we satisfy their concerns. Going to the north again, I did not address the fact that we do have two smaller windows looking in that direction, but they're transom windows. And they're mainly just to bring some light into the room and some ventilation. Because in this one bedroom over here, we only have a pair of French doors and a small window. But again, there's no concerns with this property over here. The property to the west, which is the, the munch, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. I met with them on site, they were kind enough to invite me to their property. We walked the property and I was able to explore their views and their concerns. And after talking to them, you know, I analyzed their concerns of privacy. And we came up with a concept to mitigate that. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to go back to some three-dimensional renderings, let's see, that we came up with. So this is what we have today proposed. A, it's the rear view, you can see a balcony, you can see the French doors that, which are the concern of their privacy. And what we came up with is a solution to, to, you know, make this garrail solid and then also provide a, in a louver wall, a privacy wall. I'm going to bring up more perspectives of this. This is a view from the balcony looking out. And you can see here how the louvers are angled. These louvers are going to be fixed, so they're not going to be able to be moved. They're going to be permanent, so they provide the privacy that we want. The reason that I'm aiming for this louver concept instead of coming up with a more radical approach of a window or removing thing is that we also want to be able to enjoy the, the southern exposure, the western sun and the wind coming in. And we feel, or I feel, that this concept, it's a much better approach than even providing windows. And it might sound a little bit odd, but if you analyze the concept, if you put a win, if you put a window, you can put blinds or shutters to provide the privacy. You need, the concern with that though is that you will have to open them. And when you do open those, then you again are opening up to encroaching their privacy, looking out. I think that this approach by having fixed louvers provides the privacy that we're seeking and for both the Turners and the, the munch. And also, it allows us to open up our doors, enjoy the outdoor, enjoy the sunlight coming in and the wind, and still maintain the privacy that we are seeking. Let me show you more, this is a different perspective from the other side. As you can see, because of the angled louvers, you can only look out in one direction, which is northwest, which is away from the munch residence. So there's no ability, if you're standing in the balcony or standing in the bedroom looking out, this is a direct view, looking out, how on the left portion of it, you can't see anything in that direction. But as you can, as you look a little bit to the northwest, the views open up a little bit, but that would not be looking into the munch's patio that they're concerned about. The, so I think, and we feel that this is a good approach to have the Turners enjoy the views of sunlight, wind into their patio and not encroaching the privacy to the munch. The idea of putting a window on the, on the south side of this property, the concern with that is that the southern property has a two-story structure. And that also is very shady, it's very closed. So having a window that opens up in that direction, it will provide the ventilation we need, but it will definitely limit the amount of sunlight coming into that bedroom and balcony. And again, it's another reason why I think this louver concept is, you know, the right approach for this concept. Here's a different direction, more directed from the munch's patio view. Now again, as you can see, because of the angled louvers, they limit the view into the balcony. Also, what I wanted to share with you is, you know, some really quick research on some louvers that have been done in other projects. As you can see, I'm not coming up with a concept here that has not been done in the past. It's a, it's a good approach, you know, architecturally to provide an element of privacy, an element that it's fixed and it won't be removed. The problem with, if we plant the hedge, is that if they're not maintained, maintained, they can open up views in the future. So we feel that this is a, a good approach for what we are proposing. It, it provides again, all the amenities that we're seeking with light, privacy and views and still allow the munches to maintain their privacy, this is too small of a- Here's, for example, another scenario that I was looking at. If we were to propose something other than a louver, the concern with that is that these type of, of a lattice type of privacy fences or walls or these types as such that provide an opening. The issue with these is that they're great for privacy from somebody down below looking up or somebody from far away looking into the balcony space. It's difficult from somebody far away looking into the balcony if you have these type of screening. But for somebody standing in the balcony, right up against these type of screens, they can definitely look out and without the other person on the opposite side, on the other property, noticing that somebody is looking at them. Again, I, after doing some studies and analyzing all these options, the, the louver concept I think is the best approach to what we want to accomplish. Also, the distance between the balcony here, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit more here. So the distance between the balcony here to the, the fence is 23 feet. And from the fence to the munch's patio, and I don't, I did not measure the distances, distances from their property to the fence, but I can approximate that it was at least 20 feet. So we're looking at a distance of over 40 feet between somebody standing on this balcony and the munch's deck patio that they have on their property. Let me show you, in addition to the louver concept, another item that we would like to propose is a modification to the deck itself, the balcony. As proposed, this balcony wraps around beyond this corner and it wraps all the way to the back. We're trying to minimize the impact by reducing the size of the balcony and limiting, limiting it to just the front facade of this bedroom. That way, if somebody's sitting over here, again, they can't look out in that direction. Their view will only be in, in this direction if they're looking out. So I would like to propose that modification as well to minimize any impacts to their privacy. The, here's some photos that I took from the, the neighboring property. This is a view, a view from their deck, I mean, yeah, from their deck patio area. As you can see, the distance between here and that existing fence is at least 20-plus feet. And from this fence to the balcony is another, another 23 feet. So from this point to somebody standing over here is over 40, 40 feet in distance. Here's another-
Claudio, Claudio, can I interrupt you just one second? Can you comment on that distance from this tree in the photo to the, to your, to the house, the 20-foot requirement? Let us, tell us what it is now, as proposed.
We're also working on 15 minutes, so-
I'll try to pick- Let me get back to the-
You need to move along a little bit here.
Sure, the distance between the, the, let me see if I can get back to my presentation here. So the distance between the property line and the, and the, and the setback of the rear of the property is actually 19 feet 2 inches. We're only off by 2 inches. So if it means that I have to move the building forward 2 inches, I can do that to, to satisfy that condition. So it's very minimal what we need to do to, to provide that, that setback, so-
Claudio, Claudio, the condition as I understand is that it's 20 feet from the tree, not from the property line.
Okay, so I'll have to modify that. My understanding too, it was a recommendation to you as well though. But I would like to revisit that and see if, if there's a way we can, you know, stay as close as possible to the 19 feet 10 inches that I'm proposing here on the property line. We're only off by four-plus feet, almost five feet. You know, you know, the, the issue that I have though is that I do have constraints here on the front of the property. I do have, I'm proposing 17 feet from the property line to the front of the garage. And typically, that's a 15-foot setback. And then in addition to that, I'm being forced to have a 20-foot setback from the tree. And beyond that, I have the slope and the additional trees to, to work around. So maybe, or perhaps we can analyze that concept and see if what I'm, what I'm proposing meets the criteria, given all the constraints that I have. I mean, we are putting our best intent here to accommodate the neighbors and with privacy and shadows and, and views. And I think the 19 feet from the property line, almost 20 feet from the property line is sufficient. We are staying away from the 15-foot setback that is now recommended from the tree trunk to do hand digging, and we're beyond that as well. So maybe-
We have, yeah, we have, we have a special condition that the, the commissioners will discuss this in our field. But I think we, we understand your position, we- And I was going to ask you what the setback was on the confirmed setback on the front of the garage, and you just confirmed it was 17 feet. So, okay. Are there any questions from the commissioners for Claudia?
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Bolton.
Regarding the plate height on the upper level, staff notes that there is a issue where we have exceeded the maximum plate height. Is there a reason why we have to do that? Why can you not? Or can you simply bring it into compliance?
I'll have to look, analyze, let me analyze that a little bit better.
I mean, it's very close. I think it probably could be done. Looking at it briefly, it looks like it can be done, but this is why it makes sense to bring it back to us. But I want you to focus on it, please. Just take a look.
Sure, I'll definitely look into that and see if I can address that.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions for the architect? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to open it up to the public for their comments. Is there somebody from the public that would like to address the planning commission Is there... I don't hear anybody.
I know Mr. Munch was wanting to call in, and I know there's a 30-second delay, so I might take that into account.
Okay, did he? When were you in communication with him?
It was today. He wanted to know if he was going to be able to speak.
All right. Okay.
Chair LaPage. I have a question for Claudia.
Mr. Lehman? Mr. Lehman?
You, Claudia, are you dead set on doing this trellis or, you know, the louvers on the deck? Because I'm wondering if it has to be done at all. I think if you are so far away from their house, very few people can see anything very clearly at 40 feet. And it seems... It just feels so closed in, so locked in. And the structure of the louvers, and I'm wondering, and the height of them, that it's a really pretty house. Why not be able to look at it from all angles? And so I'm, I think it's great for us all to considerate of the neighbors, and I think you are very considerate in your designs. But I'm wondering if this is just taking it a little bit too far? Because you're not six feet away. You're 40 feet away from their vision or 50 feet. And it seems unnecessary to ask it of you, to ask it of the owners to give up that, the openness and the light? Because they will be, have some blockage of light and sun and air with the louvers. So that's, that's my opinion.
Sure, can I comment on that or should I wait and tell everybody?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I guess the question is, you have an alternate, you have a, is this something you definitely want? Or would you prefer not to have it or what's your?
I, you know, we all just, yeah.
Now, let me just clarify. Mr. Munch is the neighbor to the west?
Correct, yeah.
Right, okay. And he expressed some concern about privacy. So that's, you're responding to that, correct?
Correct. And, you know, in the past, we've dealt with similar scenarios. And anytime we go over, you know, 15, 20 feet, it's never been an issue before. The only reason why we're proposing this is, again, to a piece of neighbor. I honestly feel that it's not necessary, but we wanted to have this study and this analysis on hand to present it to you and see how you feel. I would rather mitigate it with landscaping if possible. I think it will be a nicer approach for both parties to have a beautiful green hedge and trees as a buffer instead of that structure. But again, my, our bigger concern is that we don't also want to lose our sunlight and wind that we would enjoy from the balcony. And we don't feel that by planting trees, the munches will lose their privacy. But again, this is a concept. At this moment, I wanted to present the fact that we did study options. I'd rather not go in that direction. But I'll leave it up to you to, you know, to analyze it and provide me direction on that.
Okay, thank you, Claudia. All right, it looks like Mr. Munch is not calling in. So is there anyone else from the public who'd like to make comments to the planning commission regarding this application? I don't see anybody or hear anybody, so I'm going to close the public comments and open it up to the commissioners for their comments. Commissioner Bolton, would you like to begin?
Yeah, sure. I think this is a very nice sense of design. I don't think it impacts the neighbors in any substantial way. And I think the privacy screen is extremely sensitive.
And no, no!
I like the...
Will we open your door?
Hold on one second, I gotta move. Okay, that was fun. Anyway, as I was saying, my concerns are more regarding the tree protections. I have, I've visited the site and there's some substantial trees. And so I'm very pleased to see extensive hand-digging zones. And I know Claudia and his construction team will do a sensitive job when it comes to that. So I'm not too terribly worried. But I'm very pleased that the staff has identified these trees as important and went through some extensive, some extensive maneuvers to try and protect them. So I think that's my comments for now. I would like to see a look at that height. And I believe the rear setback is probably significant enough that we don't need to worry about 2 inches to make it 20 feet from the rear. 15 feet plus from the tree seems reasonable to me. And I guess that's my comments for now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Locke, would you like to make some comments?
Sure, yeah. I actually like the design a lot. I want to say, Claudia, that was a very creative way to deal with the deck issue and thinking really outside the box and kind of trying to find another way to deal with things. Although I think I prefer greenery. But it was nice and refreshing to hear that idea for the deck. The plate height definitely needs to be dropped if possible. The chimney cap needs to comply with the requirements. And I think the only other thing I had on there was the wall in the right of way. And I don't know that that was discussed at all by you, but I'd like to see that not in the right of way. So finding some way to deal with grading or whatever to keep it out of there, yeah. And there are some beautiful trees on there. And I definitely want to compliment staff on coming up with the additional plan that shows where the hand-digging needs to occur. I think that will be helpful. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Lehman?
Well, I think Commissioner Bolton and Commissioner Locke have said everything so far that I would say. And I, I feel pretty strongly that, that the, that those louvers are not necessary. I think there's... 40 feet is a long way to see. It's the width of a Carmel lot. And, you know, the amount of time, that's not even a main bedroom up there. It might be used as a study for someone or as a guest bedroom or, you know, I don't know what the composition of their family is. But I just don't think that deck is going to be used very often. So I, you know, I see no reason to box it in, to wall it in like that. And I would definitely prefer the greenery. Wherever we can do anything living, I think is always desirable. It's better for the earth. It's better for the climate. And so that's where I am. And I think with a very difficult lot, because I had, I had looked at that lot about a year ago. And the amount of trees and the slope, I thought, would make it a very difficult project. And I'm glad you've attacked it and you've done a great job with it, Claudia, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. My, I think staff's done a good job of identifying all the concerns with the project. I'm also agreeing with Commissioner Lehman that I would prefer that the deck not have the trellis. I think it's a, it's an interesting idea, but I think the setback is sufficient to mitigate any views. And I would agree with Commissioner Lehman that I prefer vegetation. The only concern I have when I went out to the site was there were some extremely large roots that were up on the surface, right where the driveway is proposed, of the pine tree, which is located on the southeast part of the property. Claudia, what's the discussion been on that?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. That's something that we did notice at the beginning of the project when we started analyzing it. So what we did is, we looked at the, you know, originally, we looked at the option of removing that root. That was not feasible. And we consulted with an arborist. And then we also consulted with the city forester at the time. And they were both fine with, first of all, they didn't want to remove that root system. So we got to keep it there. So we're okay and we're fine with us putting pavers above that area and trying to make sure and making sure that they accommodate that root. So they were fine with the concept of putting a driveway over that area, as long as we mitigate it correctly with the right details. But it's also a factor that came into play on the elevation of the finished floor of the home. Because of that root system, we were forced to have a thickness to the driveway that forced the height of the building or the elevation of the building. So I'm glad you brought that up. That's something we did analyze. We are going to keep the root and we are going to mitigate it per the conversations we have with the arborist and the forester.
Okay, so the roots are going to, the roots are going to stay and you're going to bridge over those with a permeable driveway service?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. I guess my only other question was for staff, this special condition that they have to have the 20-foot from the tree that was put on there as a result of the Foreston Beach. What's the status of that?
Yeah, so my, my understanding from that meeting was that it is a firm 20-foot setback from the tree. But I think it's worth going back and taking another look at their direction to make sure that they weren't referring to the property line. So we certainly will do that before final details review. But the Foreston Beach Commission, they were, they were very adamant about protecting that tree at the rear of the property.
Okay. All right, with that, I've got all my questions answered. So I think, can we have a motion to accept the resolution with some additional language on the special condition addressing the 20-foot setback on the tree? We need to clarify whether or not that is from the property line, from the tree. And we can, we can put some additional language on this, this resolution, the draft condition.
Is somebody doing the dishes or something?
Yeah, that's my dog's eat. That's my dog's eat. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to wait for the condition. I'm going to be on mute here.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the concept design study, DS 20-196 Turner, and the associated coastal development permit for the construction of a new single-family dwelling on Mission Five Northwest of Santa Lucia. And that we request further information from, about the condition for the setback and whether from the tree or from the property line.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, the motion made to accept the resolution as presented by staff with the draft conditions with the amendment to the last draft condition that there be clarification on the setback to the tree from staff and Foreston Beach. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. Can we have roll call, please?
Gail has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, we got some.
And Gail, you're muted.
I'm muted, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to add to that, Commissioner Locke, as possible, that we prefer greenery for that back deck and, rather than the trellis.
Yes, I agree with that.
I can second that, too.
All right, we've amended the motion to include the greenery as opposed to the louvers for the deck. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, motion is carried. Claudia, we'll see you at the final. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the public hearings tonight is a use permit. It's Use Permit 20343. This is consideration of a use permit for the Dutch Door Donuts. It's establishment of a new specialty restaurant located in the Carmel Plaza at the southeast corner of Mission and Ocean in the Central Commercial District. We have a staff report, please.
Yes, presentation showing okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So the project site is located at the southeast corner of Mission and Ocean in the interior of Carmel Plaza. The subject business space is approximately 1,200 square feet in size and is located on the mid-level of the plaza in the suite previously occupied by the Optical Shop of Aspen. The applicant has submitted a use permit application to establish a new specialty restaurant named Dutch Door Donuts in the subject space. The restaurant would sell freshly made donuts as well as hot and cold beverages and would maintain a small retail display. The rear half of the space would be used for production and preparation of the food items, and the front half would include a service counter and dining area. A total of 17 interior seats are proposed, five of which would be located at a counter with views into the kitchen area. An additional six seats are proposed as exterior seating. However, the approval for the additional outdoor seating is subject to the approval of a separate designer view application. The proposed hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seven days a week. Municipal Code Section 17.14.040.I.4 outlines the standards required for a specialty restaurant. Staff provided an analysis in the staff report for each of the required findings and found the proposed business to be consistent with the requirements for a specialty restaurant. Municipal Code Section 17.64.010.A and 1764.020 address the use permit findings and commercial use permit findings, respectively. And staff has found the project to be consistent with those sets of findings. So staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a use permit for the establishment of a new specialty restaurant, Dutch Door Donuts, and an existing commercial space located at the southwest, excuse me, southeast corner of Ocean Mission and the Carmel Plaza. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Evan, I have one question.
Sure.
So the outdoor seating, you said, would be a separate design review. What about the sign?
Yeah, the sign would be as well. This is only approving the use. Any modifications to the space, including the sign, the outdoor dining, would have to come in through a separate application.
Okay.
This is just the use permit.
All right, yes, okay. All right, thank you. Any more questions for Evan from the commissioners? I don't see any shaking their head there. Okay, thank you, Evan. Thank you. All right, are there any? Would the applicant like to make a presentation to the planning commission regarding this application?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thanks for the time, obviously, this evening. We are, myself and Tucker Bunch, who is part of our group, is also on the call. But we are very excited to obviously be in front of you and have this concept hopefully going forward in Carmel. It is a, going to be a boutique donut shop. Everything, it's not like a typical donut shop where the baker... Everything, it's not like a typical donut shop where the baker comes in and is making the donuts at 4:00 AM and they're in a display case. Everything for us is fresh, made to order and going to have a local spin on it. You know, we're going to try and keep everything as, as close to 100% organic, obviously, as possible and keeping with local roots as far as our coffees that we're going to roast and serve as well. But, you know, it's, it's going to be very simple. We're gonna have four or five donuts that are gonna be made daily, fresh to order. You walk in, make your order, they're made in front of you at that. There, there'll be a glass partition with the seating at the bar, so you can actually watch things being made. And our hope is that this is gonna be a destination. It's gonna bring locals that are craving donuts from, you know, everybody that I've talked to about this concept, is super excited about it, to the, the people that visit Carmel on a daily basis, who are looking for incredible coffee and fresh donuts. So we're excited about this concept and hope to be part of Carmel for a very long time, since we're three local families that have, that live here. And we're hoping that our kids will actually be working in this donut shop when they're old enough as well.
Mr. Whitman? Is, is this your first, first donut shop or is this, have you had this, this model in other locations?
This is a first. This is a proof of concept.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the commissioners for Mr. Whitman?
No.
This is Tucker Bunch. Thank you for.
Would you like, Mr. Bunch, you'd like to make a presentation? Make a statement?
Just, just a quick comment. Mr. Whitman has been in hospitality for many years in the area and I'm a former restaurateur, have been a chef instructor at the Culinary Institute of America in Napa Valley for almost a decade and have 35 years in the restaurant experience, 35 years in the restaurant industry. So there are no sort of first timers here. I would, I would not characterize Mr. Whitman as being a first timer in the hospitality field, nor myself. So tremendous experience being brought to bear here for a very simple, very local serving concept. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bunch. Is anyone else in the public that would like to make some comments regarding this application? Okay, I don't hear anybody. Yes, hello?
Yes, I do have a question with the owner for the, can you explain what kind of hot and cold beverage you will be serving?
Could you just identify yourself for the record?
Okay, this is Luna Wong. I'm the owner of Cafe Luna, one level below the Dutch Donuts. So I do have coffee and cold and hot beverage and we all, there is another coffee shop just around the corner on the other side of the plaza. So I'm very concerned about all three shops serving very similar drinks and pastries.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wong.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your reply.
Mr. Whitman, you want to answer, answer that question from Mrs.?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. You can still hear me. So we are going to be serving roasted coffee, drip coffee. We are going to be serving nitro coffee on tap. We will also be serving some artisan colas and sodas, teas, juices, things like that. And, you know, our program obviously will have the potential to have cappuccinos and lattes and whatnot, but right now our, our primary concept is nitro coffee and drip coffee. We want to make sure that that product is the best product going forward and then we will, you know, look at other, other avenues of roasted beverages. And then I don't know if, if Gail, Gail from the plaza is on the call or not, but I mean, obviously, you know, there is, they are excited about this concept as well. And from my understanding, there isn't any concerns on their part from the coffee side and obviously the, the boutique donut side.
Thank you, Mr. Whitman. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to make comments regarding this application to the planning commission? All right, I don't hear anybody. I'm gonna close the public comments and open it up to the commissioners for their comments. Commissioner Lehman, would you like to comment on this application?
Sure. Hi, thank you. Mr. Bunch, the, I think it's a lovely idea and I, and I wish you luck with it. My, my only concern or something that I would say just kind of put up a flag in my head was in the presentation, I believe I read that you talked about ice cream to go in cups and I just had this vision of all these cups sprinkling all over the ground on Ocean Avenue. So I wonder how much, we, we went through years of takeaway ice cream cones and finally capitulated to it. And I'm just worried about the, the litter capability of all these little paper cups. So it's, it's just something that I flagged and it's, you know, just.
I apologize.
No, no, thank you. I just want you to take a look at it.
Sure. I have no plans to serve any ice cream whatsoever at the moment.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
All right, are there, Commissioner Locke, would you like to make some comments?
Bring on the donuts. No, I, I think that's an area that, obviously, we don't have any donut shops. We do have some wonderful bakeries and I think the concept's really neat. I think it will be an asset to the plaza. And I, you know, I do understand your neighbor downstairs who, who also sells beverages, but that's not your primary business. And anyway, I, I just think it's, I think it's a neat concept and I can't wait to go get a donut.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I have no objection or really even any comments about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. This is a, I think this is a very nice specialty food store, so, you know, I, I think the applicants have a, an excellent idea here. And I also look forward to having some fresh donuts in the village. So having said that, do we have a motion to accept the resolution to approve the use permit?
I can, I can do that unless someone else, unless one of the other commissioners would like a turn. So I would like to propose the consideration of a use permit, UP 20-343, Dutch Door Donuts in Ocean and Mission in the Carmel Plaza, for the establishment of a new specialty restaurant in the southeast corner of Mission and Ocean, Central Commercial Zoning District.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution as presented by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion has been seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Chair LePage?
Yes. Resolution is carried. Thank you. I wish you luck with your endeavor.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, counsel.
Okay, the next item on the public carry side is another use permit. This is use permit, use permit 20354. It's consideration of a use permit for a Sugar Farms Marketplace for the establishment of a merchandise mart located within Suite 103 in the Carmel Plaza in the Central Commercial District. Can we have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair LePage. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so before you is another use permit application, also at Carmel Plaza. This is for Sugar Farms Marketplace. They would be located on the ground floor in Suite 103, next to the Lynx Club. This property is zoned Central Commercial. Merchandise marts are a component of retail sales that the municipal code requires a use permit approval by the planning commission. So this is not a use that we see very, very often, so I wanted to provide the, the definition for the commission as well as the public. So a merchandise mart includes a use that divides a single business premise into multiple spaces for separate businesses for the purpose of retail sales. And so that is the, the concept that is before you this evening. So the proposal is for an artisanal marketplace. This business would focus on locally sourced, sourced gifts with an emphasis on handmade and one-of-a-kind items. The interior of the business space would reflect a vintage decor with an old world ambiance. Some of the products that would be offered may include candles, scarves, pillows, vintage signs and teas. The proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00 and Sunday from 2:00 to 6:00. So this is the proposed layout of Sugar Farms Marketplace. You can see different areas dedicated for booths that would be reserved for, for different vendors to display their items. And I, I just, I'll mention, the staff report went into great detail about the different development standards that apply to a merchandise mart. I'm not gonna go through those in detail as part of this presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission might have. The project does meet all of the standards in the zoning ordinance and staff's recommendation is that the commission approve the use permit with the conditions of approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yes, I would like to ask a question. Marty, you, you, you said this is all vintage, but I'm, is it all vintage or is it, is any of it? I, I know there's another shop a little bit, or there was, but I haven't been in a, in Carmel Plaza for many months, but there is another shop that sells a variety of artisan type crafts. It's not separated into, into booths of, of individual artisans, but there's a very nice collection of a lot of things. I think it's a little bit more, it's definitely more contemporary, but I'm, I'm hoping that it would not smother this nice woman's shop. So, but as I say, I haven't been looking at things in stores for, since March, so I'm, I'm not sure how accurate I am. I hope she's still in business. That's where I'm coming from.
So your question for staff is, is there a similar store like this?
Well, there was a similar, well, there was another store selling a small variety of, of items on that same level. And I'm curious as to whether, because they're presenting this as vintage, which would mean older antique and.
They were just talking about the decor being vintage looking.
Yeah, but the design is.
Yeah, I understand that these are separate vendors, but Marty, would you like to answer that question?
That, that is correct. Commissioner Locke is, is absolutely correct. The, the feel when you walk into the store, and, and certainly the owner can, can provide some additional information about the concept, but it's sort of a vintage feel. But when, when I first started working on this application, kind of what came to mind to me was our Home Crafters Marketplace that we typically have around this type of year. So it would be bringing, you know, those types of vendors, small businesses, local artisans, and giving them a place to showcase, you know, their, their products. And it would be a very unique type of, of concept.
Do these people have other marketplaces anywhere else?
Not that I am aware of. I, I believe Rosanna may be on the phone. Rosanna Radar is the applicant and she could certainly give, give a short presentation of her, of her business concept.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for? Okay, would, is no other questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Would the applicant like to please address the planning commission regarding this application?
Yes, thank you so much. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Well, Sugar Farms Marketplace, the concept, just quick background. I run an international art company. We have art shows all over the, the country in Miami, New York, Santa Fe, San Diego. And we do these pop-up art shows where we represent various artists and galleries in one building over a course of a weekend. And I am the lead curator. It's something I've been doing for quite a long time. And before that, I was the director of all the Kincaid Galleries in the Carmel-Monterey area. So when doing this concept, I started talking to my husband and I said, I would love to do this on a scale to help local artisans who make handmade or homemade items, but make it a permanent, almost indoor farmer's market. And we started going with it and we came up with SFM, Sugar Farms Marketplace. And so what the concept is, it's an old world ambiance. We want it to feel like you're back in the 1940s, you're walking in, you know, the butcher at the front, when you used to go to those, obviously, I'm not that, that, I wasn't born in that time, but that, that whole concept, that whole world that, that where they can, they know your name, where, you know, tourists come in and they feel like they're part of the family as well. That's kind of what we wanted to go for here. So basically, every single artisan will have their own separate little area or nook. Each artisan will have their products featured in their own branding styles, their concepts, but they will not be onsite. We will handle all sales of every product that comes in. We will handle the payment of the sales tax, all of that. We handle everything, shipping of the products, merchandising, inventorying. But the layout and design is for each person to have their own little area. So it's basically taking the local artisan who wouldn't typically be able to have a platform like this to present their, their products to market unless they did a little art fair or a little pop-up show, you know, selling, like for instance, we have Muya, Muya Farms that sells olive oils and mustards. We have a wonderful guy who makes furniture out of wine barrels. We have a jeweler who makes these beautiful pieces with her 14-year-old daughter that are very boho, made from leather, leather and fabrics. So these are locals that really do these beautiful items. So our concept is. So our concept is to be able to give them a voice and a platform with a high end clientele. In addition to that, each little vendor stall will have really high-quality signage, much like I use in my art shows. It's vinyl signage that's applied to the walls. It'll give it a cohesive look throughout the entire marketplace. Each little stall will have its own meet-the-artisan bio. It'll be framed with a photo of the artisan and/or the family, because in some of these concepts, it's family farms and things like that. So it'll have a story of what inspired them, why they make this, why they do what they do. So it really creates a personalized approach. In addition, all of our bags are paper, craft paper, butcher block paper, twine, to give that old world feel. Everything that you'll find in there is, I would say, mostly locally sourced. We do have an artisan out of Palm Springs area and one artisan out of Miami. But other than that, I would say almost every artisan is local to the Monterey County area. We are sourcing everything to be made in the USA when it comes to our tissue paper, our gift bags, even our own Sugar Farms branded merchandise, which we'll sell t-shirts and mugs that will say Carmel by the Sea and Sugar Farms Marketplace. All of that is sourced locally and made in the USA. So we're using all local companies. And it's really important to us to have that. We feel that, especially with today's economic climate and everything that's going on, we want to be able to affect our community, not just ourselves. And we feel that by helping these artisans and giving them this platform, it'll be beneficial not just to our family, but to many, many other families on the, in the Monterey County. Sorry, I could run on for days. But if you have any other specific questions, I can talk about this all day long, because we're very excited about the concept, so feel free to ask any questions.
Okay, I think we'll hold our questions until we have concluded the public comments. So is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? Okay, I don't see anybody or hear anybody wanting to join us. So I'll close the public comments, open it up to the commissioners for their comments and/or questions for the applicant. Commissioner Locke, would you like to begin?
Sure. I love the concept. I think we don't have anything like that in town right now. And Gail, I know you were talking about another business in the plaza, and I believe they get their products from out of the country that they market. And that's also a really neat store. But I love this concept. I think it's something that will be unique to Carmel, provide an opportunity for multiple small businesses to continue operating and to sell their products. I especially like the idea that they don't have to actually be there, that the sales and everything will be taken care of by the owners. And I just think, I think it's a really good project.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Lehman, would you like to make some comments?
Gail, you're muted.
Sorry. I agree with Commissioner Locke that it is nice because it is unique to Carmel. And I would hope that the quality of all the merchandise reflects the quality that I think people would like to see in Carmel.
Then they're having a problem.
But I'm hoping that this is not another art gallery in disguise, because that would need a different kind of permit. And so if they are artisan products, I think that's great, and I can certainly support it. But if, since the owner's background is putting on art shows, I, you know, I have just a little bit of discomfort, and maybe Marnie can put my mind at ease on that one.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I think this is a fun concept. I hope it does well. I especially appreciate the emphasis on local vendors, and I have nothing further to say. To Gail's question, though, I did notice the product mix presented in the business plan did not look like it was art. It looked like products or items for her. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Yeah, I'm in agreement with all the commissioners. I think it's a very interesting concept. I had some of my doubts alleviated by the applicants stating that they are going to control the whole character and the whole operation. Basically, the artisans are just providing their products. So I think that's a good way to control their image, and I think that's a smart way to do this marketing. So with that said, we have a resolution by staff to support this. Do we have a motion to, was the staff's resolution?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we approve the use permit 20-354 for Sugar Farms Marketplace for the establishment of a merchandise mart in Suite 103 at the Carmel Plaza, and adopt the resolution that is attachment one to the staff report.
Can we have a second?
I said, no.
Okay, the motion's made to adopt the resolution as presented by staff. And second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Chair LePage?
Yes. Motion is carried. Good luck with your business.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing agenda items tonight. Next item on our agenda is the director's report. Marnie?
Thank you, Chair LePage. So just a couple items this evening. You may have heard earlier today, the County of Monterey did issue a new stay-at-home order that will become effective at 10:00 PM on Sunday. So what that means for our local restaurants is that they will be going to takeout and delivery only. So that order is scheduled to expire on January 11th. So definitely, you know, necessary, a little probably disappointing as well for our local restaurants. We did have an item on the city council agenda yesterday to talk about outdoor seating and the future of the program. The current permits are scheduled to expire on December 31st. Unfortunately, we had some technical difficulties, and so that meeting has been continued until Tuesday, December 15th. And I think despite the current stay-at-home order that's been issued, we will go ahead and discuss that item with the council. We were looking to get some direction from them on working with the planning commission on a longer-term program for outdoor dining. So I will update the commission at our January meeting on the outcome of that. This new stay-at-home order, I guess, gives us about a month to kind of prepare for making some changes come January, when hopefully the order is lifted. So our next meeting is scheduled for January 13th. We do have a new planning commissioner that will be joining us. His name is Bob Dells, and he comes to us from Colorado. So he's the former mayor of the town of Mountain Village. And in their town, the town council also served as the planning commission. So he has a background in serving in this capacity, and we will look forward to welcoming him at our January meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Marnie. I guess that we are adjourned. I'll look forward to a meeting, Mr. Dells, at our next meeting. And I want to wish everybody a safe holiday.
And happy shelter in place.
Happy shelter in place, yeah. Disappointed to hear that, but...
I'm so sorry for our restaurants.
Yeah, I am, too. So, anyway, I want to wish you all the best for the holidays. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holiday, guys.
See you in January.